On issues raised at prior council meetings.
None at this time, Madam Clerk.
Special event application, Alicia?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First on the agenda tonight is the St. Patrick's Day in Kennedy Park. This is separate from the parade. Cross and Orange is sponsoring this event from 11:00 to 5:00 on March 11. Next is the city's annual Easter pageant on April 1st. On April 7th and 8th, the request is for a dunk tank to be in Bradley Park. This is in conjunction with an event that's happening in Convention Hall named Catsbury Park. National Victims Rights Week celebration would be held on April 11th in Springwood Park. New Jersey's big Pinwheel Garden. A state agency is requesting to do an observation to acknowledge April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and they would do a photo op with pinwheels on the beach and they would be immediately removed after that. Earth Day Green Fair, again, is a city event which would be held in Library Square Park on April 21st. The Restaurateur sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce on April 29th. Haitian Heritage Celebration is requesting to use the senior center for their event on May the 12th. Fair with the Community is Maritana Church requesting to use Sunset Park on July 14th. Asbury Park volleyball beach tournament. The date has been changed. This would actually be held on July 28th with the rain date of August 18th on North Beach. Serve 24, Jersey Shore Dream Center would like to do this in Springwood Park on August 11th and 12th. And lastly, we have Doggo's Day Out, which would be held on September 15th in Bradley Park, rain or shine. For this particular one, I'm just asking that the date be approved. The applicant needs to come in and meet with the Special Events Committee about the logistics. Any questions? Thank you.
Move on to presentations by the city planner, Michelle Alonzo, regarding activating the transportation center.
Good evening, council members and members of the public. Tonight, I am presenting to you some preliminary ideas to improve the transportation center. This has been discussed myself, the transportation planner, Mike Manzella. We've been coming up with ideas on how to improve the transportation center. And we looked at it three ways. I'm presenting you tonight three things that we would like to push forward to make it a place. When I say a place, more than just a place where people buy tickets for New Jersey Transit and come in and out to get the train. And part of our idea first, we have few ideas with this. One is there's retailers who may want to break into coming into the city, but may not be able to find a space in the downtown or the waterfront. And the other thought process that Mr. Manzella and I had is it would be great if you can buy food at the transportation center, but considering we own it and it would be Alicia's responsibility to do things like venting if they were going to serve hot food. So, one of the solutions we had thought about that is to bring in food trucks. And then the other aspect of it is the bricks and mortar, physical aspect of it, where we would like to improve the look of the transportation center. And we were hoping to do so through public art. Public art on the inside, the outside, and also to have, hopefully, hanging from the ceiling on the inside. I had included for you pictures of the transportation center, both inside and out, as is today. So, you know, it's the exterior, I gave you photos partially to show that walls where we can do murals, to show on the exterior where food trucks can go. And the interior, so you can see the space and how the space is being utilized now. There's currently, as you know, two vendors in there. One is a taxi company in the dedicated space with its own door. And the other is a vendor who does sell snacks and some beverages. But otherwise, it's a very large area with just a little bit of seating. And while we know that we have done, we've put out bids before for the inside, we, one of the things we would like to do differently at this time is get the word out more extensively. And basically, the words, I guess, is try again at the concessions. Because I know, repeat years, we've put out to rent various spaces in the transportation center. And this time, we would like to get the word out a little more and also be a little bit more flexible with the space in the center. Rather than boxing certain spaces, we would let the vendor basically come to us and tell us how much space and where they would like to go inside. And we would do a minimum bid of $20 per square foot. And the other idea, you know, hopefully, if we get more vendors on the interior, is that we could have some money to be able to keep it open longer, that we would have money to pay staff and also to hopefully maintain, keep the bathrooms open. And as you know, will solve, would be a solution for some of the issues we have with people seeking a bathroom late at night. We're proposing that the hours of operation also can be flexible based on the type of vendor and the vendor need. Clearly, if there's a vendor that wants to cater to a later night crowd, we can keep it open until 8:00. If someone wants to cater more to a morning crowd, then they could put in the hours, 8:00 a.m. to a certain time. And again, we were proposing that this would, of course, not interfere with the two current vendors in there that currently have contracts with the city.
What do those contracts run out?
We were proposing, and of course, this is flexible.
No, the two there now?
Oh, in another two years. They have three-year contracts for the inside. We were thinking these could be three-year contracts as well. And for the food trucks, we were thinking it would be a one-year as a pilot to see if that's what, how that goes. Because our proposal for the food trucks is it would be two food trucks with a bid of $4,000 per truck, $8,000. And then also, that cost could help pay for special and also contribute to keeping the bathroom, the bathroom open and the bathroom clean. We were thinking about, well, I said, part of the intent is to provide food service and make that, and make it a place where people would positively gather there and eat. But it would also be another area where people could get food later at night and in an area other than the CBD. We're thinking it would, the food trucks would be their Memorial Day to the weekend after Labor Day. And that the hours of operation would be a Thursday to Saturday from 8:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m., but again, very flexible with that. Also, we're thinking earlier, it could be earlier, and explore if there's a Sunday market. This was from talking to one or two food truck vendors on what they thought the market could be. Some of them spoke that they may want to capture a, people leaving Asbury Park by train on a Sunday and that they could grab food as they get on a train. So, and also, that's some of the talk also of being able to capture markets, people come off the train into Asbury Park. So, even though those were the initial hours, we thought there could be flexibility with the hours. And the concept, so, they also might be, I know there were some issues raised about our food truck ordinance. We would treat this as we treat Northeast, where we would have tables and chairs and we would define as a restaurant. Because that's what we did with Northeast, for Northeast to have stationary food trucks. And we would have contracts similar. In other words, you cannot just, as a food truck, you have to be there. You know, the time specified in the contract, it can't be come and go, as you please, because the definition will be as a restaurant. And it's a service that, again, we want to consistently provide. Not that someone goes to look for the food truck to eat and it's not there. So, I'd also include a small drawing that shows the possible location of the food trucks and tables that we could put out for people to eat. And then the last page is about public art. And when I, when it said murals inside, murals outside, art being hung from the ceiling where there, we used to have banners promoting Asbury Park. It could be, the Public Arts Commission had talked about it. It could be an ever-changing exhibit, it could be more like a gallery space. The Public Art Commission would be a partner with us in providing murals and other forms of art. And I think this is very key, so that when people get off the train or even people, you know, look across at the transportation center, they see a lively, inviting building that reflects who we are in Asbury Park. And so, it would be very welcoming. And I provide pictures of some station art, both in the United States and in other countries, just to show, you know, the other places have done external art on their train stations. So, again, this is, you know, at infant, ideas at their infancy. There's flexibility in changing it or even coming up with some other ideas. Again, like, especially with the success of High Voltage where it is, we were thinking, wouldn't it be great if the transportation center can become a destination?
I think it's a great idea. I love all of it. The only thing I want to think through is the food trucks from the 8 to 3. Drunk people from downtown crossing Main to get food trucks. And then, on the other hand, I think, oh, then we could keep all of them stationed in one place for an Uber or Lyft or something like that. So, I just want to think that one through. But other than that, I think it's brilliant.
I think upgrading above the train stations is a wonderful idea, anything that we can do. And to make it more attractive for people who are coming into town and leaving. And that might encourage people to come using the trains rather than driving.
As far as the conception, I have no problem with it. But you say it's in infancy. I think it's got to be revisited with people, volunteer, just because you're talking about many things that have moving issues. And your projections of $4,000, $4,000 rent will not pay for police and DPW. You're not even close. So, we'll be losing money as soon as we go out to bid. So, the numbers are wrong. I'm not totally comfortable with the food trucks. I'm not totally comfortable with, why would we put out the tables? Why not make the food trucks put out the tables as far as liability sake? Why should the city be liable?
Well, the tables would remain there.
Oh, they would?
Yeah.
Yes.
Like on beaches.
Okay, so, so the city's going to buy those or the food trucks going to buy those? Again, this is all stuff that can be worked out through details. And when you're talking about as far as putting something in the middle, everything's open. And you're right, we've gone out to bid three times and nobody's bid on anything maybe because we did it the wrong way. So, I have no problem putting out to bid, submit something and we'll look at it. But if you put something in the middle, and I'm just like thinking of this right now, if you put something in the middle, say a closed store. So, who would pay for the renovations?
Well, the thing is, it's more, clearly, the tenant would pay for the renovations, but I don't think someone would select the middle, per se. My experience with concessions and train stations is they kind of go towards the walls.
Right, because you, right, I'd go to a corner wall because I wouldn't have to build two walls and I have security where, okay, I thought you said the center.
No, I said that there would be flexibility with the square footage. I said, so.
And we also have to recognize, you know, again, I have no problem with it. It's just got to be done the right way.
Right.
Because we have some priceless antiques in there, be it the sign that was saved or refurbished, be it the wagon from Asbury Park Press that, you know, cannot get destroyed. And you cannot just have a cop there. If you have a cop there, you need somebody from DPW there because the police officer is not going to man the bathrooms.
No, no.
Right, so you need two employees during your hours of operations. So, no, it's a good idea. It is ugly, always has been, building the city should have never taken. If we can do something to make it better and get better use out of it, no problem. Again, I just think some of your numbers, they're original numbers.
We will revisit those numbers. And I want to say, we'll try. You know, we could be off mark where maybe there, you know, when push comes to shove, maybe some retailers don't want to go in there, but I'd like to try again.
Yeah, no problem. And again, the food truck proposal, 50/50 on it. I mean, it's going to be one of those things, again, where, guess what, Mr. Food Truck, you bid, you're giving us a year's escrow upfront because come July, when you figure out you're not making money, you're not just going to pack up and leave on it. So, that's what food trucks do, and they do it to Madison Marquette. They lose trucks during the course of the year because they're not making any money. So, we have to be covered that way as far as the cost. Very good idea.
Thank you.
View of agenda items for this evening's meeting?
Resolution 2018-5 is approving special event application. 86 is an overpaying of taxes at 603 Lake Avenue. Overpaid sewer is resolution 2018-87 for 209 Seventh Avenue. Overpaid taxes is resolution 2018-88 for 1307 First Avenue. 2018-89 is to refund an overpayment of redevelopment area bond payment highly charged at 601 Heck Street, Unit 101. There's a place-to-place liquor license transfer for House of Independence, 2018-90. 2018-91 is the.
Hold on one second. Sidney, what is that?
They, it's a reduction of premises. So, anytime you change your, anywhere where you keep your liquor, you have to do a place-to-place transfer. So, they have a reduction of where they're actually serving and storing liquor.
Thank you.
Resolution 2018-91 is releasing a performance bonds for the Asbury Hotel and Hotel and accepting the maintenance guarantee. 2018-92 is releasing the performance bond for South Grand Development and accepting that maintenance guarantee. Those are governed both by the municipal and your store. Resolution, I'm sorry, 2018-93 is for the Monroe, releasing the performance bond and accepting the maintenance bond. Resolution 2018-94 is a resolution supporting the Sustainable New Jersey grant application for the electric vehicle charging station. That is what Mr. Manzella spoke about at the last meeting. The city is applying for a $20,000 grant if this resolution lasts. Resolution 2018-95 is regulations for the 2018 beach season. None of these have changed from last year other than the dates because it's changed. Moving on to individual resolutions. Temporary budget is resolution 2018-96. We anticipate having the introduced budget at the March 14 meeting. Resolution 2018-97 is the payment of bills. Resolution 2018 is awarding a contract for design, contract administration, inspection services to TNF for Bridge Street. That is the complete reconstruction of Bridge Street, which right now is one of the worst streets in the city. Resolution 2018-99 is awarding a contract to J.C. Contracting to replace the lightest springwood in Acton Avenue. Resolution 2018-100 is a contract for NTP LLC for the firehouse vehicle bay door lintels. This is how it works, go up and down and it needs to be replaced. I just want to point out that all these, this is lower than the engineer's estimate. We were estimating this would be $100,000 and it was $28,000. But our engineer has reviewed and talked to the company and we believe they can do it at this price.
Their bid is so much lower than anybody else's.
Yes, we think they have materials on sale.
Oh, I did know that.
That's why, so they didn't actually have to go out wide. But they've done good work everywhere else. The references came back great. So, if they can do it and save us $75,000, I'll take that. Resolution 2018-101 is authorizing a change order, change order number one, to the Springwood Avenue sanitary sewer project. This is for additional lease that New Jersey Department of Transportation acquired. As you remember, we were the ones responsible for providing traffic control for this project. This is the main street area of the project where DOT requires to go 24 steps. Resolution 2018-102 authorizes the mosquito control division to conduct aerial mosquito operations at the city's request. You know, requested, they got to deal with it. Resolution 2018-103 is proposing, proposed amendment to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan to the planning board. This is just the, this planning board will hear it and then report back its findings to the city council. Resolution 2018-104 is implementing competitive contracting to procure vendors to install electric vehicle infrastructure and operate electric vehicles, bar share program within the city. This is also what Mr. Manzella was talking about at the last meeting two weeks ago. And then, lastly, we've been awarded a $430,000, $430,000 DOT grant to reconstruct the Lake Drive. We received the DOT notification on Friday and in order to try to get this project designed and shovel the ground by the end of the summer, we added these to the agenda. This is the resolution awarding the contract for design, construction, contract administration, inspection services for this roadway to TNF Associates. Is there any questions?
No, but that, excuse me, that's the DeLake Drive from the Park Avenue Bridge to the Lock Harbor border.
Thank you. And today for introduction, there's various ordinances. 2018 and 20, I'm sorry, 2018 and 2011 established salaries. We're looking to create additional positions. And again, this is an CFO position. During the interview process for the Director of Procuring, there is an individual who feels better qualified as a CFO. So, we want to at least have this position on the books so we can negotiate with that individual. Resolution 28, I'm sorry, introduction ordinance 2018-12 is towing and storage fees amendments. What this is, is provides better clarification for what a day is. A day is actually 12:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. There was some argument that a day would be, okay, I picked up my, I got my car towed to the lot at 2:00, I picked it up at 1:00 the next day, that's 24 hours, that's a day. So, we're just providing clarification. And then, resolution, I'm sorry, again, ordinance 2018-13 is the grant, is the, I'm sorry, is the capital ordinance for the grant that we received from DOT. This will allow us to pay TNF and then reconstruct the roadway.
Is that in a revised agenda?
Yes. For second reading tonight is an ordinance authorizing the naming of certain alleys. That is ordinance 2018-1. 2018-4 is the capital improvement program that we've previously discussed. And ordinance, second reading, 2018-5 is for $275,000. That needs to be corrected on the agenda for placing the carbon, which is recent, it's useful life at the sewer plant. And then, resolution, ordinance 2018-6 is for second reading, a mending of the redevelopment plan to allow for permanent use in our district.
So, that was for $25,000, not $200,000?
$275,000.
$275,000.
Is there any questions on the ordinances for second reading?
Move on to matters by the city council.
Just a couple of things. On 17th of February, there was a program in, I think it was in Trenton. But at that time, the city received two awards. One was from the New Jersey Historical Commission, and it was presented to Asbury Park City, Asbury Park African-American Music Heritage Project. And that was awarded to us, recognizing an outstanding project that explores the experience of African-Americans in New Jersey. And also, on the same day, we received a certificate of achievement in recognition of the Asbury Park African-American Music Heritage Project for outstanding contributions in documenting and preserving cultural heritage important to the state of New Jersey and our nation. And that's signed by the Secretary of State. And this work that's being done by, through a grant that was given to the public library. And Jen Sauter is the person who has been the manager of it. And there are a group of people who are working to document, to get oral histories and to preserve the music, musical history of Asbury Park and the contribution of African-Americans. And it's going to be preserved and protected and kept at the Monmouth University Museum.
I would like to just thank Hope Academy for inviting me to their program yesterday. It was an outstanding program. It had a lot to do with Black History Month. And all grades is raised from the beginning to the end to, I think they go from three to eight. It was so outstanding that it was just like, people just start flowing in and congratulating the kids. And all the kids, what you did was they put them all around the wall. We had something similar to this last year, I think, Cleveland High School, about black history, people that made it in black history and people that invented black history. It was just beautiful how the kids just spoke about it. You could look at the pictures, but they tap you on the shoulder and say, let me tell you this about it. And a lot of our schools don't get the congratulations that they need. So, I'm just saying, thank you, Hope Academy. You did a fine job.
The only thing I was going to say somewhat related to that is the Asbury Park School District did their Black History Celebration at the Paramount tonight on our council meeting for the second year in a row. So, maybe we could coordinate with them because I think everybody on the council would really love to go to that event as well. If we could coordinate it so they don't, they don't schedule it on the council meeting, on the second or fourth Wednesday.
This weekend, something very special is going to be happening in New Jersey. So, I'd like to congratulate Jalen Page, an Asbury Park student athlete. He will be the first looking to be, the first wrestler from Asbury Park to be a place winner, the NJSIAA Wrestling Championship in 81 years. That's fantastic. This young man has worked very hard the past three years and is a great role model. As far as wrestling in the city, it's never been a big sport, but there's a good program at the middle school being put on by people called Beat the Streets. And it's a program to learn wrestling and it's also, you have to go to tutoring. I would also like to acknowledge their coach, Coach Artisone, and tell both Jalen and Matt, no matter the outcome in Atlantic City, both of you are gold medal winners in Asbury Park. Again, 81 years since anybody from Asbury Park has represented us at the state finals. So, congratulations. That's all I have.
Matters by the city manager?
Uh, tomorrow it is anticipated that there's going to start the construction for the sewer project, uh, Springwood Avenue. Uh, this is between Memorial and Main. There will be a road closure from both sides of it, uh, the street. It is a jacket door, so there will be two holes in the street as we pour through the ground underneath the the train tracks to hook up the sewer line. Uh, local businesses will be open, uh, Lucy's, the pipe levels and the the store. We will be creating angled parking spaces in a few weeks, once we can move the the barrier back a little bit, once the equipment is in place and everything is is, um, safe. But we just want everyone to know that the project is going to start tomorrow, um, and that the local businesses will be open. Also, in the next, hopefully, two or three weeks, we're going to be restarting our road programs, um, as the asphalt plans get going. Uh, so that's something to look out for. The engineer report will be posted to the website the next day or two. It really just says that, you know, recommending these awards and that road programs are going to start due to, you know, it's getting more, that's all.
The jacket bore, that's just hope we don't find any fossils.
Or the train, trucks collapse. That's that's.
I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about finding a fossil and the project being put on hold for five years.
Or the train gone, so we don't worry those transportation.
Okay. Brad?
Matters by city attorney.
Nothing.
All right, at this time, we'll adjourn until seven P M. for the regular meeting. Order the regular meeting of the city council. Councilmember Chapman, councilmember Clinton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yep.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
At this time, please rise for a silent prayer and moment of reflection. During this time, could we please keep our thoughts and prayers to Yvani Vanos Moreno, please? Flags lit, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty one Public Law nineteen seventy five, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded on the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster and Store Ledger on January four, two thousand and eighteen, and posted on a bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
Move it.
Move it.
Gotcha. Each member of the city, uh, each member of the public has three minutes to speak. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Parking in my neighborhood, I find it's.
What block of First Avenue?
I'm sorry?
What block?
The fourth block, First Avenue.
Fourth block.
Four one First Avenue. So I'm across the street. Yeah, I'm across the street from Library Square Park and the parking over there, I have about four abandoned cars right now. Uh, I have neighbors that have up to ten cars. I have cars that don't move for two or three weeks at a time, and it's something I've noticed looking there for a while. I see frustrated tourists drive around in the summertime and they, uh, you know, they they look for parking and they just drive off. It's just upsetting. I don't want these people going to another town to spend their money. So I, you know, it's kind of crazy coming from a loser on the street, but I think parking really should be regulated over there. Uh, no one uses their driveways. I have neighbors that have driveways that probably got little ten cars and they have no cars in the driveway, they have all on the street. Uh, I watch cars sit there for up to two, three months, I call the police, they come by, they want the registration, the cars are registered, and then they drive off. They have towed a car before, but there's cars that have been sitting there since the summer. And I just, it's it's not right. People are kind of abusing it. You know, I called Mike, the parking guy, and he, uh, he had said that he understood and he sees frustration, but I just, something needs to be done for the summer. Uh, the other thing too is the lot behind the church is used on Sundays for the surrounding churches, about five churches in the neighborhood, and I think they have permits for that, but I noticed in the summertime during the week, it's just an open lot and it's dust blows off, it's a mess. Cars stay overnight overnight and they don't move. Uh, and it's just something that it kind of has to be regulated. It's just, it's a lot of lost revenue to the town, um, they're not paying the parking meters, so I just, it's coming from someone who lives in that neighborhood, parking has to be regulated over there. It's just, it just doesn't make any sense. The abandoned cars are just, they're piling up.
Well, we'll get them towed.
And you notice that the cars, just cars that have dents on the side of them. I called on that car, it got into an accident, was abandoned, so, um, just a heads up, you know, something needs to be addressed, so.
We'll get them towed.
No, I appreciate it, and I'm sure the city manager's probably.
We'll get them towed.
Email the police department to look into it first thing in the morning.
I'll make sure if legal registration.
Tony, uh, can we be quiet?
Anthony, you can't talk, you can't talk to the.
He can't talk. So it'll be looked into first thing in the morning, and we do have two cars now with license plate readers where we're going around and no registration, we're towing. So we'll make sure your blocks hit.
How do you guys feel about the regular meeting possibly being performed? Have residents with the.
That, I would say, the first Wednesday, I think it's the seventh, in March, uh, five thirty upstairs in the council, uh, in the city manager conference room is a parking meeting. If you can make it, fine. If you can't, send either Mike Manzella email.
We can go to those meetings if we didn't want.
Oh, yes, and we encourage it. So please, if you can make it, uh, first Wednesday of the month, uh, five thirty.
Right.
Thank you.
Time scale, take a little plan too.
Louise Murray.
Hey, 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 look, 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 everybody, if the cross conversation starts, I'm going to start having people removed.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Louise Murray, sixteen oh four Grand Avenue, Asbury Park. Getting back to the park, not sure. Okay, this week, if I had a book, I would have had at least four violations early in the morning. Um, Rita, um, called someone, this, what I want to do is clear this up. I know our police department is overwhelmed sometimes. I know that we're, they're they're working day and night. I don't know who to call. I mean, here, you know, you have these little violations and then she called one day and they said, they said, well, the truck isn't big enough, or the ordinance says this, or or it's only an inch into the yellow zone. Well, today it's an inch, tomorrow it's three inches, then I got to call the cops and tell them to come over here because they're in my, you know, blocking my driveway. I don't know who to call. I am going to that meeting, March seventh, I'm going to go to, but I don't know if Mike's responsible for taking the calls, if we're supposed to go through the police department, if there is a specific, um, if you have a a crew or a task force that's just going to give out tickets, I don't know what to do. But I'll tell you something, if you don't curb it now, we're going to be in big trouble come the summer because they don't care. I'm half thinking that they should even start making parking spaces in front of houses without the numbers, you know? Because you should see, you, thanks, you should see how they try to jam four cars in one spot, or they spread it out and you're lucky if you can get more than two. You know what I mean? They're like all over the place. It's it's crazy. So I don't know who to call. Do you have any?
Any complaints about illegal parking should go directly to the police department, not.
Okay, all right, I accept that. Now, an inch is not acceptable in Bradley Beach or Red Bank. Is Asbury going to overlook an inch?
We should not.
Okay, good enough. I'll just say by the word of the mayor, come over here and ticket this car. I could have four, four, four violations this week going to Mass. I went, oh, I put little notes on them and I tell them careful parking, yellow zone, you know, that kind of thing, but I don't know. All right.
You forward that to the police, Mike? And it seems like, you know, it's not the first time we've heard this story. It seems like every two weeks we hear this story, but.
It's going to get worse.
We're not solving the problem.
And part of the problem is the presidential. I don't know what they're doing with their parking area, but part of the problem is the overflow from the apartment houses over there. I mean, I see people parking in front of her house that belong on Del Lake Drive, so.
The presidential has been notified that they have to fix their parking deck and they're in the process of doing it, but it's not going to happen overnight.
No, I know, they've been working on it.
Right, and so more information, like Manzella at the meeting of the seventh will get, can give you more concrete information as far as where they stand and anticipated completion dates, so we get those cars off the street.
Okay.
Thank you, Louise.
Rainy Morano, Eighth Avenue. I guess parking is a subject tonight. Uh, I also want to know if, uh, a truck, a box truck's been getting tickets almost nightly. Why doesn't the police department pull this guy in? We know where he lives. Recently, he changed his license plate to Indiana. It's in the back of the box truck. No registration, so I don't know if they registered them in Indiana, no license plate in the front, and he still parks every day on Eighth Avenue. Why can't you bring somebody like that in? Why do you have to keep giving them tickets? I know you want to make money, but, uh, there comes to a point where you have to bring the box trucks in. Why can't you tow them? We have enough money to get a place to put these trucks if you tow them. I'm sure you do now. I mean, you have to do something about it. They park in the middle of your house and then they can't park behind it, you can't park in front of it, and then they tell you, well, you don't have, you call the police, they come. Well, you have no lines on your street. I didn't know how to have lines after fifty years for a parking space. But if that's what it takes, then you should mark all the spaces too, because they park right in the middle of the street and they stay there two days. Two parking spots, yes. And the other thing I wanted to talk about is, uh, I don't know if that's Third Avenue or Second where Holy Spirit is, that's a real scam. That's been going on for ten years. When is that building going to be finished? You gave them, uh, maybe four, five months ago, he paid a couple, I think he paid like twenty two thousand dollars for more space on the street. And what is he doing? Nothing. You know, this is the kind of scam that goes on in Lakewood. You have to be very careful because this has been going on for ten years now. He's never going to finish that building and it's going to become a rental instead of a condo. You have to, I I don't know how long, if there's a time limit for a building, a building. That's at least ten years. And nobody does anything about it. And I hate to keep calling all the time. You might also give Louise and I a ticket book, I'll tell you.
I always pay for one.
We would make so much money.
I always pay for one.
Because they think the yellow zone on Eighth Avenue is a decoration too. That's the other thing. They think because the apartment house is decorated now with flowers and bunnies, they think that the Eighth Avenue is, uh, that yellow line, they can park in it every minute, every day. I mean, like that, they really hit hard. They can always get soft. And then when you call them, this is the thing I don't like, they have no knowledge of how many pounds a truck should be on the street. Louise and I know, how come we know? How come they don't know? It says on the side of the truck, twelve thousand five hundred pounds. That's more than it should be, right? John, you know that, right?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, Rita, sit right there.
Tony, Tony, Tony.
It's supposed to be six thousand.
Tony, Tony.
For Carol.
Tony. That's strike two. The next strike, the next strike, I'm going to have you removed, okay?
You know, I wouldn't be, John.
Okay, but you cannot speak.
So, I mean, like, I think you should look into the Holy Spirit Lyceum Building.
We'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, that's important, John, because remember what happened that night? You were here.
We'll get back to you on that. Uh, something tragic happened with the owner and he passed away. So I don't know where it stands. Uh, so.
For the Holy Spirit.
I know where the box truck comes from.
For Holy Spirit. So from Holy Spirit. We'll, we'll have Michelle look into it and we'll give it, get you an answer on that.
You sure of?
Yeah.
Promise?
Have I replied to you?
No.
Okay, I'm not going to start tonight. Okay, I'm not going to say tomorrow, and Michelle's not here, so I don't know, but we will get back to you.
Jerry Scrano, Long Branch. Um, I guess parking is a big problem. It's just like that orange Corvette that parks on Second Avenue and never moves all summer and never gets a ticket with the orange cones. I think it's on the corner of Berg and Second. But you know what, Rita's place, if you're three minutes after eleven when they change for street sweeping, they give you tickets. I don't know why they're not doing a good job on that man's street, and I recommend he get a timestamp for taking pictures, that way he can prove his case. Okay, now, I asked you in the past, what are the goals for the city manager this year and what were they last year? I would like to know what departments actually had a decrease in their spending because for me, my phone bill was a hundred and twenty five, I got it reduced to a hundred and ten, and now it's seventy five dollars, and I didn't switch companies. I got the cable bill, it used to be one sixty one, they raised it to one ninety nine, I got that reduced to one thirty nine. The insurance company, car insurance, told me I used to pay a thousand thirty two, they raised the price. I switched company and now the car insurance for two vehicles is fourteen hundred dollars. What are the departments doing to make these little victories count? Because Long Branch is bragging no tax increase for three years and they're having an election in May. We have an election coming up. What are you guys going to say? How you saved the taxpayers money? How was the city manager held accountable to get reductions? We're having more and more places come online. Of course, we're going to have more revenue, but the old saying that Ben Franklin said, a penny saved is a penny earned, and no one's saving pennies. So could you tell me what the city manager's goals are? That's the most important thing to me.
Are you done?
I'm done now.
The city manager's goals are, I'm going to say, I'm not trying to be smart or anything, are set by Mayor Calzino. Where we set policy. Uh, so the policy that we set, the city manager enacts every day, we do not get involved with personnel, we do not get involved with hiring and firing, that's strictly his value, and so, but as far as the budget, we haven't finished our budget yet. We're we're still going through the budget, and that is being done. And we're looking at every department and every line item, and can we do what Long Branch did? No, you know darn well we couldn't do it because as long as we were on state aid.
Listen, this is a better place.
As long as we were on state aid, getting the transitional aid money, we could not reduce the taxes. Now that hopefully we're off, we're going to be able to stabilize and then reduce taxes.
And I would argue that the money saved, I mean, didn't our, isn't our credit rating at at the highest it's been in like twenty five years under Michael?
Right.
Thirty years.
Thirty years?
Sadist.
Okay, all I'm saying is, we have an election coming up. I want the numbers to look good. You got plenty of time to cook the books. That's all I'm saying. Good luck, everybody. Bye.
I'm going to make you my campaign manager. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jerry.
Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park. Um, I'm here tonight, um, on behalf of the committee to save the West Side Community Center. Um, we're here, um, pretty much you can read our sign. Um, we're here as a steady committee looking for the benefit of this town and this community, and specifically the West Side, um, asking the city to move forward with, um, action to help bring along the revitalization of West Side Community Center. Um, reading the article, knowing that the judgments are in, and knowing that we're in a critical time and space in which the community needs the West Side Community Center to be online. Um, sitting in recent meetings, different things to do, different activities, different things, and what the city is, is in loss of space. We need every inch, um, in this mile by square mile of a town. And then we would like to thank you for the city to, for their actions on continually pushing, um, the boundaries and pushing for great things to happen, um, throughout the city. Um, the West Side is in need of this right now. So, um, thank you, and, um, we're looking for speeded action. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shonda Neal. I live at Three Manor Drive in Upstate New Jersey. And I'm so excited about all the opportunity that we have discussed and planned, and that we look forward to, and I'm grateful for the council taking some time to consider our requests for receivership. We're very happy that you have, in the past, discussed us, but now we'd like to know, do you have us on the agenda going forward? We're not sure if you have been able to understand our urgency about getting receivership for the West Side Community Center. We really, 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 really need to do this as soon as possible. Too much time has passed. The kids are suffering. The town is suffering, and we have such a great agenda going on. We have the momentum. Now is the time. And so I would like to ask, are we a priority for the council? What do we need to do to be a priority for the council? Does the council have us on an agenda for making a decision about our request for receivership? Can you please tell me where we stand?
The council, as you saw in the article, received a tax letter just yesterday. Internally, we're still reviewing it. Assistant, myself, the city attorney, and our tax attorney. With that, we hope to have just a review of it to the council for the March 14th, or March 28th closed session, and then we'll start discussing what options are and possible action, if there is any. But right now, we just got the decision yesterday.
So you were deciding to not decide, make, just kind of kick the can down the road until you got the decision from the court just yesterday?
We had to. We had to.
Oh, okay.
And we don't know what the West Side Community Center's next steps are going to be. There might be an appeal. We don't know. It's literally been a day. Excuse me. So we have to review it internally before we can even send something to the council of what the staff thinks might be the best way to do it. It's been a day.
Well, it is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that because you're a debtor, that you can file for receivership regardless of the status of the tax lien.
We didn't feel that way. And that's what we talked about at a meeting probably in January. We said that we were waiting, we wanted to see what the tax board ruled, the rules yesterday.
Okay. Okay, so we will be on the agenda?
As I said, we haven't reviewed anything internally yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Curtis Morley, From Jersey With Love, 115 D Wood Avenue, West Side Community Center. Where do I start? So, my problem is, not even a problem. If everybody is so ready to be involved and sit down at the table, I find it hard that we haven't gotten a call, haven't gotten an email, we haven't been able to sit down at the table together and have a discussion. But my nonprofit, my New Jersey State certified nonprofit, just so we're clear, is in a building every day, spending money, doing what we have to do to get this building and the facility back online. So, if you really want to help, let's sit down at the table and stop all of this talking, because that's all that's happening, is a whole bunch of this, back and forth. So if we really want to be about this community center and the children, come have a conversation. Let's have a conversation. Let's sit down and work together, because it's not happening. It's not happening. It's not happening. So if y'all want to be a part so much.
Excuse me, could you face the camera?
Come have a conversation. Come have a conversation. Sit down at the table, and let's work on this together, if that is the cause. I'm spending money daily. Myself, my other vice president, daily. We just spent close to $22,000 on air conditioning and heating units for the building that we have to repair. So if y'all really want to help, let's help. Let's come sit down at the table and stop all of this back and forth. Because I'm going to really get to the point, I don't need to be here to do this. I come here because I want to be involved in the community, but I'm not begging people for money. I'm not going to ask no more. We're going to just get it done, like we're doing right now. Where were y'all when the $1,900 gas bill was at the center? And the gas was about to get cut off. Where was all the help in the helping? You want to do this and that? Where's all of that? Where's the help now? So, in closing, we're fine. I would love to have y'all help and assistance in getting this facility back online, but from Jersey with love, we're going to do it with or without, just to be clear. With or without. But I would love some help from the city.
Thank you. Motion to close. Move it. Move it.
Second. All favor. All opposed. We'll move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. We have a consecutive session minutes of February 14, 2018, workshop minutes of February 14, 2018, and we also have the regular session minutes of February 14, 2018. Have a motion to accept the minutes, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
You have the consent agenda. Resolution 2018-85, resolution approving special event applications. Resolution 2018-86, resolution authorizing refund due to overpayment for 603 Lake Avenue. 2018-87, resolution of refund overpaid sewer for 209 Seventh Avenue. 2018-88, resolution of refund overpaid taxes for 1307 First Avenue. 2018-89, resolution of refund overpaid taxes for 601 Heck Street, Unit 101. 2018-90, resolution to approve place-to-place license transfer, which is a reduction of premises for House of Independence LLC. 2018-91, resolution of the City of Asbury Park releasing performance bond for the Asbury Hotel and accepting the maintenance guarantee. Resolution of the City of Asbury Park, this is resolution 2018-92, releasing performance bonds for South Grand and accepting their maintenance guarantee. Resolution 2018-93, it's a resolution releasing performance bond for the Monroe Development and accepting the maintenance guarantee. Resolution 2018-94, resolution of support authorizing a sustainable Jersey grant application for electric vehicle charging stations. And resolution 2018-95, resolution establishing regulations for the 2018 beach season. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anybody wishes to remove from the consent? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adopt those resolutions, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2018-96, a resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for the 2018 budget. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-97, resolution approving payment of bills. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-98, resolution awarding contract for design, contract administration inspection services for Bridge Street. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-99, resolution awarding contract to J.C. Contracting for Springwood and Atkins Traffic Light. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-100, resolution awarding contract for MTB LLC for the Firehouse Vehicle Bay Door Lentils. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-101, authorizing change order number one to the contract for the Springwood Avenue sanitary sewer project. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-102, resolution authorizing the County of Monmouth mosquito control division to conduct aerial mosquito control operations within the City of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clinton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion failed. Resolution 2018-103, resolution of mayor and city council of the City of Asbury Park referring proposed amendments to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan to the City of Asbury Park Planning Board and directing the planning board to take certain actions pursuant to NJS A48, colon, 12A, dash, 7A. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember, I'm sorry, Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-104, authorizing the City of Asbury Park to implement competitive contracting process to procure vendors to install electric vehicle infrastructure and operate EV car share program within the city. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-105, resolution awarding contract for design contract administration inspection services for D. Lake Drive. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances. We have ordinances for introduction 2018-10, and ordinance establishing salaries for certain employees within the City of Asbury Park, Monmouth County. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for March 28, 2018. Ordnance 2018-11, an ordinance establishing salaries for certain employees within the City of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Sting.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for March 28, 2018. Ordnance 2018-12, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 4, General Licensing, Section 25, licensing for towing businesses, subsection 25.10, towing and storage fees and charges of the code of the City of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Clinton? Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for March 28, 2018. Ordnance 2018-13, bond ordinance providing for various improvements to D. Lake Drive by and in the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth State, New Jersey, appropriating $1,035,000, therefore including grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation, the amount of $429,595, and authorizing issuance of $605,405 bonds or notes for the city to finance a part of the cost thereof. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for March 28, 2018. We're now on to second hearing, or second reading public hearing. Ordnance 2018-1, is an ordinance authorizing naming certain alleys located and under the jurisdiction of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to open this ordinance to the public?
Move it.
Motion to close.
Motion to adopt, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordnance 2018-4, bond ordinance providing for various 2018 capital improvements by and in the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth State, New Jersey, appropriating $4 million, therefore authorizing issuance of $3,809,521 bonds or notes of the city to finance a cost thereof. Can I have a motion to open this to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Saying no, can I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
Can I have a motion to adopt, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Bond ordinance 2018-5, bond ordinance providing for various sewer utility improvements by and in the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth State, New Jersey, appropriating $275,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of $205,000 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Can I have a motion to open it to public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Saying no, public?
Hold on, one second. Yes, Rita.
Is this the sewer plant?
Yes.
Yes?
I just have one question.
Date, your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Rita Moran, O'8th Avenue. What does our sewer tax money go for? Does it go directly to the sewer plant account, or does that just get spent?
Sewer utility. They pay for sewer operations.
So why do we always have to borrow money for the sewer plant? It doesn't accumulate enough?
Uh, no, we don't have cash on hand to pay for those sort of items.
What?
We don't have cash to pay for those, for this item.
With the redevelopment, is that sewer plant going to be big enough for all those apartments?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
But I, I thought the sewer plant money was to go, when we pay our sewer tax quarterly, it, it goes into the sewer budget.
It does.
But it's, yeah, but how come we're always borrowing? Well, don't we ever accumulate enough money to pay for anything?
No.
Because many years, many years it was non-liquidating, where we were running it negative. The past two years, we've been running it a small positive, but not a very small positive, a couple thousand dollars.